We're ready to begin our regular council meeting on November 4th, 2014, 7:30 PM at the Twinsburg Government Center Council Chamber. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Cerace?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Please join us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Cerace.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us. In planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg, give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving, but for the betterment of our community, so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we have no minutes to approve of at this time, so we're going to move on. And I believe we have no awards or presentations?
Correct.
Okay? Any audience participation?
There is none.
There is none, okay. Then we'll move on to council communications and committee report. Mr. Yates?
Yes, the Planning Commission did meet yesterday, and there were several items There was a lot of split and consolidation. This is property on Conotan and Depot Street. It was approved. Fox Hollow, which is a new development, proposed new development, has come back, and they had to revise site plan, and it was also approved unanimously. There was a rezoning request for property that is up adjacent to McDonald's. There's a State Farm agency there currently. There's three lots. It's going to be recommended for potential rezoning. That was approved actually for one. So, those were the items that were on the agenda. Other announcements, the city is also doing its annual Turkey Trot this Saturday, I believe starts at 10:00 AM. Registration beforehand, I know you can register. You may still be able to register online for it, but it's just for those that haven't participated in it. It's a great race. It's a five-mile run, so a little bit longer than most of your community runs, and it runs through Old Hickory Trail, which is great, challenging, very picturesque, but I would invite the community to come out for that. And then also, today I did attend a ceremony that was just thanking the Cleveland Indians for a grant that they gave to the city and to our Twinsburg youth baseball program, just for improvements up on Liberty Park. And they were there today for some photos and for us to thank them and just the improvements, I think, the community and especially the baseball league is really going to embrace. But, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yeah, good evening. I only have one announcement tonight. The BZI will meet on November 19th at 6:30 here in the Government Center. The rest of my committees have not met, and that ends my report.
Okay. I did attend the Safety Committee meeting on November 3rd, and we began discussing implementing a pedestrian safe city program. Mr. Cerace is going to talk a little more on that, and that's all I have for my committee reports. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. The Treasury Investment Committee met this evening. Members of that are myself, the Finance Director, the Mayor, and the Law Director, with an investment manager called Meter that specializes in municipal investment services throughout the state of Ohio. We discussed possibly looking at a mixed portfolio of very secure investments that the city would enter into, so that we get some return on our money. I mean, when I first got on council, I think that we used to get almost a million dollars in interest off of our investments in CDs. I mean, it was a huge amount of money that we're getting back in. Right now, you know, savings accounts are better off keeping it on the dresser.
About eighty-seven thousand last year, something like that.
Actually, I thought it was lower than that, but if we do a managed portfolio that is very safe and monitored, we can possibly get, you know, in excess of a quarter million dollars a year in revenue after any fees that would be incurred. So I think it's something that, I thought the presentation was done extremely well. They seem to have a large amount of local clients as well as statewide clients, and I think that it's something that the Finance Committee should discuss in the near future. Steps would be to decide how much money we would like to have that tied up, and it's a mix of short-term, I mean, one-year, two-year, three-year, and five-year investments, so it's not locking our money into CDs over a long range of time. And with that mix, we get to take advantage of the longer-term investment returns, which are in the 2% to 3% range right now, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot better than, you know, .02. So, I think that it's a great idea. I think that, I appreciate Karen bringing this to our attention, and I think that we need to do everything we can to maximize our money, at the same time being, have access to it and make sure that we pay our bills. So, I think it's a great program, and I look forward to investigating it further with the rest of council. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Cerace?
Thank you. As Mrs. Stoffer said, we had a Safety Committee meeting yesterday afternoon. We did discuss bringing forward to council a pedestrian safety program, which would be a project to install sidewalks on our main roads that do not have them. We specifically looked at starting with Liberty Road and Route 91, and having an accessway for pedestrians to safely travel down these roads. And we will be bringing forward a recommendation that we establish this project and fund it for $200,000 each year, but we'll talk about that in our next finance meeting. The next finance meeting will be before the next council meeting, which is November 18th, two weeks from tonight, and the finance meeting will be at 6:15 before the council meeting. We also discussed looking at changing what we charge for EMS services. Our service charges haven't been changed in many years, and they have dropped well below what the average is. Chief Morgan brought us some figures on looking at what the averages are, and we're going to have legislation coming forward probably November, probably December, I'm guessing, to look at updating these charges for our EMS services. The Twins Day Committee will meet tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, and I too was at the thing this afternoon with the Cleveland Indians, thanking them for the grant money that they gave toward our Twinsburg Boys League development. And I just wanted to thank Daisy Walker for all her work through the Environmental Commission and working with Derek Schroeder to make this happen. It was a good project and very successful all the way around, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
I have no report for this evening.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. Stoffer. Well, to follow up on what Mr. Yates said and Mr. Cerace said, I also was at the ribbon cutting, or the presentation, this afternoon to thank Nate Janasso, who was there representing the Cleveland Indians charities. That's a foundation who donates money to different organizations and to different cities to help with their baseball programs, with their overall sporting programs, but in particular baseball. And this particular grant was written in cooperation with Derek Schroeder from the Parks Department, Lynn Muter from Community Planning, and Daisy Walker, who searched out the grant, found it, and took the lead on it. I would also like to recognize not just Lynn and Derek and Daisy, but the Environmental Commission students who were there today, because they were all excited about it, and they're also a part of this entire overall program. The entire project cost $17,000, and the Cleveland Indians charities donated $5,000 towards that project. It's pretty exciting. We now have dugout covers to keep our kids out of the sun when they're playing baseball, and there's a nice picture of that. Under drains to help with field drainage, and also, there was regrading of the fields and overseeding of the outfield. Twinsburg Boys League, without them, we wouldn't be able, or Twinsburg Baseball League, excuse me, without them, we wouldn't be able to get this project done, because there was a shortfall, obviously, a $17,000 project, and the city contributed, and so did the Twinsburg Baseball Organization. So, thank you. Andy Chenkis was there from TBL today. It was great to have him there, and I really think that they appreciated it from the Cleveland Indians charities, that there was so much participation on the project itself, and also coming to the presentation this afternoon. It showed that we really appreciate it. Appreciate what they do for our community and for all the surrounding communities. Keeps our baseball programs going, provides nice facilities, and the money we save helps with participation fees for our youngsters. So, thank you to the Cleveland Indians for everything that they provided, and thank you again to everybody who wrote that grant. This might have short notice here, but I'm going to mention it anyway. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, November 5th, 6:00 to 9:30 is the wine tasting event at Brewster's to raise funds for the Cost of Freedom Tribute that's coming to Twinsburg in July of 2015. So, if you buy your tickets today, if there's still time, it's $25. Tomorrow, it's $30 at the door. There's about 65 people signed up to go, and I hope you can make it, because this is a great, great project that we're fundraising for, and almost at our goal. We're, I always ask Shannon for the numbers here, and she's always...
Yeah, they're meeting right now, so, I don't have the most current, but we were about 6,000 shy of our goal, and we did about 18 at our celebrity bartending, 1,800, so we're getting there. A little over 4,000 left to go, so...
Guys are doing a great job. And tomorrow is the wine tasting, and the next event is...
The Cleveland Whiskey Tasting, and that's December 5th, also at Brewster's.
I have Thursday, December 4th, is that right?
December 4th. Tomorrow's event's the 5th, yes.
So, if you can't make wine tasting tonight, then maybe December 4th, that's a Thursday, maybe you'll be able to make the whiskey tasting event, and I'm sure we'll have lots of fun at both of those. So, thank you for your hard work, Shannon, Adele, Mark, and Angel. Angel Keefe, also, you were on the radio.
Yes. First time for that.
Promoting the event, so, very nice. I mentioned last week that there is going to be a Thanksgiving feast November 21st for our seniors, but there's also going to be another Thanksgiving community dinner, and this one will be on November 25th. It will be at the Community Center, Twinsburg Community Center in Twinsburg, up behind the pool where our senior center is, and this is open to anybody. Again, Tuesday, November 25th, by 8:00 to 7:00. We are encouraging, though, some donations to make sure that everybody has enough food in their tummies after that dinner. We're looking for donations of everything from turkey, mashed potatoes, gravy, stuffing, corn, green beans, rolled salad, pies, paper products, so anything that you would like to donate towards a Thanksgiving feast for our community and for the families in our community, we'd be grateful to accept and make sure that it gets there for that dinner on November 25th. That's the end of my report. Karen Hasler and Jenny, so I'm not sure I have it. I think, oh, thank you, Shannon.
So far, we have received our first income tax advance for November in the amount of That's up from this month compared to last month by 2.24 percent. However, this is just the first advance. We'll give report at the next council meeting, and department heads are reviewing their 2014 budget to ensure their overall budget is in good shape. That's it.
We're almost there, getting ready for our final budget. Chief Noga?
Good evening. During the month of October, the City of Twinsburg Communications Center generated 2,296 calls for service among the Twinsburg Police and Fire Departments and the Reminderville Police and Fire Departments. The total call count for the year is 23,834. Twinsburg police officers arrested and are cited 113 suspects into court on 125 different counts. This includes criminal and traffic charges. Officers issued 172 written warnings for traffic violations and 36 parking citations. Officers investigated 48 traffic crashes, of which six were injury crashes, 11 were on private property, and none were fatal, and I am pleased to say we had absolutely no incidents on Halloween. Trick or treat went very well, and that's my report.
Thank you. Chief Morgan?
Good evening.
For the month of October, the fire department responded to 177 calls for service. That happens to be identical to what we did in October of 2013. For the year so far, we're still on a pace that's, right now, at 1,809 calls for the year. Pace is just slightly behind last year's. Just one notable event amongst those calls, we had to rescue a lady from one of the Ledges in Ledges Park early in the month. The jump out and down was easy, the jump up and back, she couldn't do, so we had to go out and help her back. So, just want to encourage people, if they are going to be out in the parks, to stay on the trails. And the ranger that responded gave them the same encouragement there. Fire prevention-wise, we completed 121 inspections. Right now, we're past due on five, and we hosted, or participated in eight fire education sessions. We did open one fire investigation, and we were able to close it as well. We had 42 individual training sessions over the course of the month for fire and EMS call, or topics. And finally, just a point of interest, as we encourage people, when they change the clock, to change the batteries in their detectors, just in case you forgot, we want to encourage people to go ahead and check their detectors and make sure not only that the batteries are good, but that the detectors are still good. There is a shelf life on those detectors. They don't last forever, so check your detector, make sure it's still good. And if you need some guidance on the right kind of detector to purchase, if you go to www.get-safe-alarms.com, they have some tips there on the right kinds to buy. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Good advice. Thank you, Chief. Chris Campbell?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
During the month of October, the Service Department completed the branch shipping program for the year. This included 3,418 stops and 1,238 cubic yards of debris was collected. Right after that, leaf pickup began on October 13th. We currently have three crews out. They are actually working into the evening, and they plan on working the weekends. Saturday for sure, possibly Sunday, but it's just really, it's heavy out there. Parks maintenance continues. We're still working on the Liberty Park ballfields, roadway crack sealing. We're trying to get as much of that done as we can, but that's weather permitting, and we have been through the storm systems a total of 10 times this year, so everything looks good there. Systems are passing water very well, so, and then we've got a lot of little jobs we're trying to clean up before the bad weather hits. And that is my report.
Chris, I have a question. On the branch shipping, it's completed, right?
It is completed.
What are we doing with those residents that put branches out? Are we notifying them anyway that the program's over, that they can tie them and get rid of them?
Normally, they'll call.
Because if they're just sitting out there, they're not going to get picked up.
Yeah, normally, they'll call, and we tell them to cut them to four-foot lengths, and waste management will take them, or any of the local landscaping companies will take them, if they can get them there.
Right. Yeah, because I know there's some in my neighborhood, and if, you know, unless they tie them up, they're going to sit there.
Yeah.
And before you know it, they're going to be all over the place, so...
And unfortunately, you know...
Maybe we could put a notice in our newsletter?
Yeah, that'd be a nice idea, if we could put a notice in even maybe on the website, telling them that the chipping's over. Here's how you're going to get rid of them.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that's a good thought.
All right. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Chris, and I would like to thank you for being there today also at the recognition for the Cleveland Indians, because Chris's department did a lot of the work involved in getting those fields up and running and looking as great as they do, so, thank you to you and your group, too.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Earlier, Mr. Yates mentioned a couple of things that were approved by Planning Commission. They'll be coming to council. The first was the approval of the preliminary plat for Fox Hollow. That's a 24-lot subdivision at Whitewood Parkway and Ravenna Road. That'll be coming to you for the approval of the preliminary plat at your next meeting. Let's see, in addition to that, there was the rezoning request for 2561 East Aurora Road. That's a, the property immediately adjacent to the McDonald's has requested rezoning from C-5 to C-3, and that'll be on the agenda for the next council meeting, and will be, should begin the three-reading process to discuss getting it on the ballot. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with representatives from the Davie Environmental Group to discuss Glen Eagle's pond modification issues. As part of the need for irrigation water, we decided to look at what we might be able to do to modify some of the existing ponds on the property. However, some of those ponds are subject to wetland mitigation requirements that were put on them as part of the original approval for the subdivision and the construction of the subdivision. So, we need to get some advice on how to approach the core for revision to the wetland mitigation areas, or to see how we, those wetland mitigation areas might be impacted by irrigation water improvements. So, we're going to begin that discussion with Davie Environmental to see what course we might need to take, and if we get a good response and we're able to pursue it through the core, we'll likely save the $48,000 that would have been required to do an irrigation water supply study that was bid just two months ago. So, we're hoping we're going to be able to put that money towards actually doing the solution as opposed to just studying where water might come from. We met with the staff from GPD, who will be doing the assessment of the central area roadway improvements. That scope of services was generally outlined by our request for qualifications that went out two months ago, and we're getting a firm cost from GPD, who submitted what we thought was the best qualifications for that particular project. We're making progress on the executive summary for the Twinsburg Comprehensive Plan. As it stands, it looks like it's going to be an 18-inch by 24-inch folded, two-sided document. It'll have a lot of graphics in it and should convey the salient points of the comprehensive plan in a very, hopefully, very attractive and very convenient method, and something that'd be a lot less expensive for us to produce and disseminate, as opposed to doing the entire 200-plus page document. So, we'll keep you informed of that as it gets closer to being a more finalized product. Tomorrow evening, I'll be attending a presentation by Mark Snyderman of the Cleveland Federal Reserve Bank regarding regional economy compared to the state and nation, and hoping to learn a little bit about how we might benefit from that status here within the city of Twinsburg. And that, I guess, is the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Jim, did you have anything this evening? No? Okay. I just have two other things. I would like to thank Matt Salur for being here from the Capital Improvements Board this evening to make recommendations to city council. As we talked about, we're nearing the end of our budget, and capital improvements is probably one of the biggest components and certainly takes the most time to make those decisions. So, council will be reviewing their recommendations and coming up with their final thoughts on that for adoption. So, thank you for all the hard work. Dennis was here, too, so thank you very much. We appreciate that. And the only other last announcement is, the fitness center will be open on Thanksgiving, so after you eat your turkey, get out there and hit the treadmill. That's all I have this evening.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank Allison Doyle also for tending and for helping out with that capital.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
I have one thing I forgot to mention while the department heads are still here. I wanted to give a shout-out to Chief Noga for, you mentioned Halloween, and as I was passing out candy on Halloween night, several times, there was a patrol car in the neighborhood coming through, and I think that added to your zero incidents on that evening, so it was nice to see them out and about around, and I'm sure that it wasn't only our neighborhood that they were in, I'm sure you had them in every neighborhood, and I appreciate that very much. And not to slight anybody else, but all the department heads and your staffs, thank you very much for all that you do. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll go ahead and move on to legislation. Anybody else have anything? Okay. First, we have ordinance 106, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is the third and final reading, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 106, 2014. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Fury. Any discussion?
This establishes a revenue account and funds the top program and a CRA program that we use to entice businesses to stay and grow in Twinsburg, as well as it will fund with the bed tax, the Community Investment Corporation that's been set up by the city of Twinsburg as well. The total amount is $76,240. It would be split between those three entities.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Cerace?
No.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 106, 2014 passes by a 6-1 vote. Next, we have ordinance 109, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance approving a change order to the contract with GPD for modifications of additional work related to state Route 91 improvement project.
Okay, this is also on its third and final reading, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 109, 2014. Is there a second?
No second.
I'll yield.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Yates. Any discussion?
This was a change to the design to add the hawk signals to the roundabouts on 91. These are signals that are set back away from the roundabout to allow for ease and safety of pedestrians crossing, so this was a change to the original design.
Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Cerace?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Ordinance 109, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have ordinance 114, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance accepting the lands and improvements dedicated to public use for the Corbett Farms subdivision Phase 1 and accepting a maintenance bond.
Okay, this is its second reading. Next, we have ordinance 116, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is also, that was also on its second reading. Next, we have ordinance 119, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance establishing a policy for the handling of contracts for capital improvement projects in excess of $25,000.
Okay, that was also its second reading. Okay, next, we have ordinance 121, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance approving a change order to the contract with frontier construction for modifications of additional work related to the golf course improvement project and declaring an emergency.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 121, 2014, and place it on its third and final reading and declared an emergency. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Cerace. Would anyone like to speak on this? Any discussion on this? Any discussion on this?
The reason for the emergency is that the work's been done and we need to pay the invoice.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Anybody else? Anyone else? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes, 7-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 121, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr., sorry, Mr. Roden. Any other discussion?
This ordinance changes the amount by $47,000 for the golf course improvements. We approved $32,000 on 9/23 and $15,000 on 10/28. The reason that we had the improvement, needed the, to increase it is that there were trees and large amounts of debris that was buried in the fairways. So, as the golf course started to do their work, they had to replace the soil because they were really just, you know, not a good practice that was done 25 years ago. So, it was required to replace, so. But the work's been completed and this will end that Phase 1 part of this project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Ordinance 122, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. And finally, we have ordinance 123, 2014.
We have 122?
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Okay, next, we have ordinance 122, 2014. Actually, then I probably need to go back. Ordinance 121, 2014 passes by a 7-0, passes by 7-0 vote. Now, we have ordinance 122, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the City of Twinsburg for the year 2014 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 122, 2014, place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Ceraci. Any discussion on the emergency?
The reason for the emergency is that we held a bond, an escrow, for the Energy Conservation Group. And we need to pay the money back for $44,000.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Ordinance 122, 2014, oh, I apologize, passes by a 7-0 vote as an emergency. The emergency clause passes. So, now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 122, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Fury. Any further discussion?
Just closes out an escrow account.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 122, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Finally, we have ordinance 123, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for various special revenue accounts as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the City of Twinsburg for the year 2014 and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 123, 2014, place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Anybody have any discussion on the emergency?
This is being put into place because we just, we have to comply with the Highway Vice Code. We're running against the timeline, so this needs to get approved tonight.
Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes, 7-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 123, 2014.
So moved.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Ceraci. Any further discussion?
It just transfers a small amount of money into our general bond obligation. It's $80,000. It takes it up to $1,051,000. And we also, and that's account 320. And then, on account 330, it's a special bond assessment. It just adds $2,700, take it up to a total of $2,100,000 so that the accounts balance for the end of the year. And that's the reason we need to pass this now on our emergency.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yeah.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Ordinance 123, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Okay, that is the end of our legislation. Next, we'll move on to unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. Mr. McDermott?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Ceraci?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the members of the Capital Improvements Board for working with us over the last month and a half.